Welcome to our special meeting of the City Council of Jackson, Mississippi. Today is July 8th, 10 o'clock a.m. First, we'll have invocation by Reverend Chris Collins of Birch Hill Baptist Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Praise the Lord, everybody. I just want to say that I'm excited about our new council. Amen? Thank God for you. Let us pray. Dear Father, in Jesus' name, we thank you again, oh God, for what you have planned for our city of Jackson, Mississippi, Lord. We know that, Lord, you sit high and you look. Lord, and Lord, Father God, we're going to look at this new council meeting as when David had to leave and then Solomon came on. There were some things that David couldn't do, Lord, but we know now that you've set us a council, a staff right now that's going to get the job done for Jackson, Mississippi. We love you and we give you glory right now. No judgments and all things will be done in your name. We give you glory. In Jesus' name, we pray. Let the church say amen.
Amen.
I will read the item and we will get a motion in a second to put it on the floor. Order of the City Council of Jackson, Mississippi, providing the election of Council President and Vice President.
So moved.
Second.
All right, the item has been moved and properly seconded. Do we have, um, who? Okay, there you go.
I would like to nominate Councilman Griselle for President.
It has been moved and properly seconded. For Council President Griselle. Any questions or comments?
I've got a question. The net is that one council member is not present yet. He usually gets here about this time. And I'm wondering if it might be better to do some of the other items until we have everybody here present.
Councilman, if, to my knowledge, we will have to elect a president and vice president before moving forward with the meeting. That's why I'm presiding technically over the meeting.
Okay. Sylvia?
Do anyone want to check and see if he's in his office?
I checked previously. I didn't see him there. Is any of his staff here? Staff for Mr. Stokes' office?
All right, he's not present. Do we have any other nominations before the? Okay, Councilman.
I'd like to nominate Councilman Hartley.
Second. He's here?
Okay. Good morning, Councilman Stokes. All right, so we have a nomination for Councilman Griselle for President, as well as Councilman Hartley for President. The nominations for Council President, do we have any other nominations? The nominations are closed. So we'll call for a vote for Council President Griselle. Oppose?
Oppose.
Okay. Now we'll have the election for Council President Hartley, all in favor. All right. The vote for Council President for Councilman Griselle was four, with Council President Hartley three. So now I would turn it over to President Griselle.
You can't finish that part.
You want me to finish?
Please.
Okay, I'll finish.
Thank you, colleagues.
Now we'll open up nominations for Council Vice President. Councilman Stokes?
Thank you. I would like to nominate Councilman Hartley.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other nominations for Council Vice President? Mr. Parkinson?
I'd like to nominate Tina Clay.
Second.
Any other nominations for Council Vice President? The nominations for Council Vice Presidents are closed. Now we'll have the election for Council Vice President. The first person we have is Council Vice President Hartley, all in favor. Council Vice President Clay, all in favor. The vote for Council President, Council Vice President Hartley was four in favor and Council Vice President Clay, three in favor. Congratulations, Councilman Griselle and Councilman Hartley.
President?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. President, we have new members. And I had a chance to go to the Essence Festival this weekend. I wanted to get a mayor and the two new council members a shirt. I know we're not going to be able to ship gifts in the future.
You do realize I've lost weight.
I got a bigger nose.
And I wanted to welcome on board and tell everyone, I saw many people from Jackson and Jackson, Mississippi at the Essence Festival. I wanted to welcome on board. You know, it's, uh, you hear a lot of different things about working in the city, but one thing I tell you, it's never going to be a dull moment. Thank you.
Amen.
All right, good morning, colleagues. Are there any opening remarks from anyone? Councilman Stokes, you usually.
Yes, sir. I would like to open the meeting in honor of Mr. Jimmy Lee Ellis Senior, Monty Ellis' grandfather, Attorney Charles Earl Griffin Senior, one of the outstanding lawyers in this community, Mr. George G. Swagga, Swagga Junior, Mrs. Toni Francis McDay, Mr. Charlie Black Murray Junior, legendary gospel music pioneer, Miss Moser Berks, and a happy 18th birthday to DeClara Dennis. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Anyone else? I would also ask colleagues that we open and close this meeting in memory of Mr. Fred Terry of Terry, Mississippi. He is actually, sorry, Mr. Fred Scott. I was just corrected. He's actually my Deputy Clerk Valerie's uncle. He passed away on June 30th, and he'll be funeralized this, on the 9th, at Rose Creek Missionary Baptist Church down in Terry, right? All right, anything else, colleagues? All right. I also want to take the time to welcome our two new colleagues to the DAS. I've had the chance to get to know them over the past few weeks, and I think we've got a really good council here, everybody. Also, Mayor Horn, congratulations on your race and welcome to the DAS also. Thank you. Just to set the ground rules, we have Agenda Item Comments and Non-Agenda Item Comments. We only have Non-Agenda Item Comments today. Please, those of you who, when I call your name, come up to the mic, state your name for the record, please, and you will have three minutes for your comment. The clerk will notify you when you have 30 seconds left. Once the clerk raises the last flag, you must end your comment, okay? Respectfully. Thank you so much. First one is Mr. Mike Johnson, Conditions of the City and Employee Treatment. This is Mr. Mike Johnson here. Mr. Mike Johnson. Ms. April Anderson, Trespassing and Police Issues. Come to the mic here, please.
How y'all doing today?
If you could adjust the mic. Well, clerks help her out. All right, thank you.
How y'all doing today?
Great, thank you.
My name is April Anderson. I stay at 956 Hay Street, that's in South Jackson off of Oak Forest. And I brought here today some pictures of some neighbors that just moved into the neighborhood, and they are causing disturbance. They've been trespassing in my yard. I keep calling the police. It takes the police two hours and 45 minutes to come each time. The first time the police never did come. Also, with that being said, I'm a little nervous, y'all.
All right.
So just work with me. But I do have some photos that I would like to share. Their company keep trespassing in my yard. They keep bagging up in my yard. The dogs keep coming over there. My kids cannot go outside and play because they are trying to attack my kids. And when I went over there, I went over there three times, tried to have a civilized conversation with them before involving you guys, and it's not working. I have had threats since then. They have said that they was going to get somebody to try to rob me late at night when I come out of my property and beat me up.
If you could, if you could hand those to the clerk and she can get them to us. Mayor, do you have anybody who can? I know this sounds like a JPD issue. I see Chief Wade coming in now. We'll have Chief Wade address the matter.
And I have took pictures of my property and some of those photos to let y'all know that I am securing my property to let people know not to cross my yard. They have a big yard themselves, but they tend to keep coming back and forth in my yard. And then when the police go over there, the first time the police never did show up. The second time the police came out, they went in the house and locked the door and never came back out. The third time that the police came, he went over there and asked the lady if she would keep her dog in her yard or put the dog on a change. And she told him, "The dog don't bite. The dog don't bite. So what you coming over here for? What you coming over here for?" She was handling him. And he said, "Well, ma'am, all I can tell you is do what you got to do for the safety of you and your kids." And I'm like, "Okay, can you, you know, make a, so I can make a police report to have them arrested?" Because this is harassment if I can't come out my own home and be safe.
All right, well, Chief Wade is going to talk to you about your situation, because it is a non-civil issue, but he'll talk to you outside. Thank you. And the clerk will get us those documents.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Are we keeping in account the record side of the Police Department, someone about these dog bites? Citizens calling every week where neighbors got these dogs and these dogs are biting children and everybody else, but it seems like nothing is being done. Something, we need to keep a record, I think, about how many people being bit by these vicious dogs. One lady stopped me at Church of Chicken. The kid got almost ate up by a pack of dogs. So, you know, even though the owner of the dog saying the dog is not vicious and might not bite, but when he see someone else, this dog attacks. And it looked like the dog is let back in the neighborhood to terrorize people. So I would hope Mr. Mayor, legal, someone would draw ordinance up where we can keep a note of in arrests and complaints about dogs. Thank you.
And that brings to my mind, too, we need to figure out the status of that $468,000 that we allocated for animal control. Thank you. Mr. Zach Service, Election Integrity?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Excuse me. Before we move on to the next, I just want to ask the administration, do you have anyone here from Animal Control that could speak? I'm having, I have one of my neighborhood leaders right now that's, that was attacked at his home. And, you know, we really need to get a handle on those dogs out there. Folks are trying to walk around the communities and stuff, so. If there's anyone that could help address it.
Well, I would say that, that there are ordinances in place that speak to this, and we just need to make sure that they're enforced. And we will take a hard look at this if we're getting complaints. And if you will get with me and give me the specifics on the particular situation and question, we'll address it. And also with the young lady who was here, I would like to speak with her after the meeting.
Understood. And thank you so much for that reply. And again, congratulations. We look forward to working with you to move our city forward. Thank you, sir.
All right, Mr. Service?
Hey, y'all, Zach Service, Resident Ward Three. Congratulations to all the new council members. Congratulations Senator Horn, who's now Mayor Horn, and all the people joining. A few things I want to talk about. One is Election Integrity. It was alleged to me from someone who's an employee in the municipal clerk's office that there were poll workers who were not paid. They were then coming to be paid. They were directed to someone else and told to fill out absentee ballots in unsealed envelopes, turn them in, then go back to actually get paid. And from my understanding, this was in relation to Councilman Foot's race. I also recall when I was qualifying to become a candidate for mayor, that I originally tried to qualify as an independent. Then I considered running on the Republican ticket after talking to some of the council people that are actually Democrats and saying, since it was so saturated on the independent ticket, perhaps I should run Republican to get my message out. The clerk would not give me a Republican packet. She denied it to me, even though I had not yet qualified as an independent. So I was forced to run independent anyway. And even then, she called to tell me I didn't qualify, then rustled some papers and said, "Oh, it looks like you qualified by one signature." Then we also know that she tried to not let any Republicans qualify at all for any of the races until the Secretary of State said that that was wrong. So I want to urge y'all's administration, I know that you have to keep continuity during this transition, but I want to urge you to pick a different municipal clerk. There's a lot of strikes against her when it comes to integrity of not just elections but employee treatment. Someone else was going to speak about that today, but I have lots of reports from inside that office that they're being yelled at, they're being berated, they're being racially discriminated against, and that the HR department has done nothing about it, that there's employees that have reached out.
Mr. Service, I can't let you sit here and disparage a city employee. I encourage you to meet with Mayor Horn and his staff to discuss your issues.
I appreciate your encouragement, but it's my public comment. I have the right to talk about whatever I like, sir.
Yeah, but I can't let you.
You can let me because it's my constitutional right, sir. Thank you. May I have some time added back to my timer for that interruption? Thank you.
It gets tense.
Now, next, I'd like to talk about, really quickly, smoking in public parks. I've witnessed it with my children at Jase Park, at Manhattan Park, many parks, and not just smoking, you know, cigarettes, but also marijuana. And I don't have any issue with someone smoking marijuana in their home, but when you drive a vehicle and you come to a public park with children, that should be dealt with. So I'd like to encourage this new administration with the help of JPD to really crack down on that, especially looking into places like Manhattan Park, which is near where I live, and Jase Park, where I've seen it happen frequently, to make sure it's a safe environment for families and children. Thank you all for your time.
Next, we have Commissioner Lay. Dr. Lay? All right. General comments?
I'm kind of tall. This mic is kind of short.
That's all right.
Good morning, Mayor Horn, and congratulations on your race. And good morning, all City Councilmen, and especially LaShea Thompson. She is my ward representative. I wanted to personally come down here and meet you, and I wanted to personally come down here and thank Mayor Horn. I want to say to everyone that times has changed. We're in a new era of life. And Mr. Honorable John Horn was raised by the old school. I watched him for 30 years develop and grow at the legislative office, and I believe with all my heart that he is going to turn this city around. But he is only one man, and everybody in this room live in one of these wards. It is time for us to build a relationship with your ward councilmen and speak up about the things that are going on, because everything cannot ride on the police chief and the mayor. And Mayor Horn, I am so proud, and I know you're going to do this city well. And thank you all for my time.
Thank you. And last but definitely least, Mr. MacEpps, Planning Issues?
Great morning, everybody.
Good morning.
It's been a long time since I've been here, especially standing in this spot. Usually I'm talking about vote education or getting folks to oppose today. It's something different. I've been in this city since 2000. I have been adding to this city, involved in all type of disaster relief, civic engagement work, anything you could think of, we always been there, ever since I came to college. But the problem I've been having is with planning. I definitely think it's personal. I've been working with Ms. Ainsworth around a fence around my dumpster. I had a real intensive conversation with her May 16th, begging her not to put my information into a system. I will work on a plan to put a fence around the dumpster. She then told me to call her back. I waited a week, called her every day. She finally answered the phone and then belittled me while I was on the phone. And we talked, I told her, I said, "I have a lot of issues. I'm a caregiver." Well, right after that, my uncle got sick and went to the hospital. All right, I was in the hospital with him. Next happened, it was around Memorial Day weekend, that 27th was the actual court date. I didn't show for that because I had told her that where I was going to be. Moving forward, we still had issues with this fence. So we put up a fence, it was called non-combustible material. The non-combustible material can be anything that's not flammable. But to my knowledge, if a dumpster fire happens, a fence of no sort is going to stop it. So this is more of presence of not of what something is legitimate, it's more about what you want. The main issue that came up was my dates was actually the 24th. I had court date again. Now, the prior, that prior Friday, the inspector came out and approved, which was June 20th. He improved it, I mean, he approved it. Ms. Ainsworth waited to Monday, June 23rd, 4:53, for her to fill it and said that she was having another inspector come out that next morning, which was 8 o'clock, which would be an entire, too short of a notice to do anything. Well, I thought it was very spiteful. I thought it was very vindictive. But the issue happened right after that, where she uploaded 48 documents to my portal of other people's information. I immediately reached out to the administration and reported a data breach. My wife and I are both mental health officials. We work and we understand HIPAA, and we sent this, and nothing has been done. I have everything for people's information from their birth date, their social security numbers, their height, everything. I went to court that Tuesday, sent the information up showing that the fence was completed. Nothing still had been resolved until this morning, when she sent a message in the portal saying that someone was going to come out to inspect the fence again at 6:30 this morning, which is the same day I got court. So I'm leaving here, I'm headed to court. So my first thing was to come speak to you guys about this. The next thing is going to court to speak to the judge. My third thing is to call a press conference to talk about the injustice that we've been serving as business owners that run these businesses out of our front pocket. Mr. Eddie Wright is another person here. We was on the front line for COVID, and we continue to serve this city and work for this city, but we definitely want to be respected by this city and all its employees.
Thank you, Mr. Epps. Mayor, you have, and I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but you have somebody he can speak with? I see Mr. Von Anderson back there.
I'll let the council address the issue.
Okay. Well, we can't.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I would hope that with people that we have involved, that your situation won't repeat. And I know what you feel. A lot of people come about the same thing. They've been saying, you know, "They charged me this amount of money to put up a fence around the garbage, but right next day ain't got one. Why?" So I'm hoping by you coming to speak that people are listening to what's being said and that you'll be treated better as a taxpayer citizen in this city.
Mr. Stokes, the thing that hurt me the most, my uncle just recently got out of hospital, and I got bad news that he has, he has a mass on his kidney. And when I had to go to court, I asked Ms., I asked Ms. Ainsworth, "Could I not go? I needed to be there with the home health nurse to do his labs." And she told me, "Mr. Epps, all that you're doing is complaining." Mr. Epps, everyone got someone, something going on in their family. This is what she told me. And I asked her, I said, "Ma'am, I'm an adult just like you are. I work for the city myself. I would never talk to a constituent like that." But that's how she talked to me, and she's not me, just other people like that. And I got the news that, you know, right after that, he went back in the hospital. I have real stuff to do. My store is closed today because I had to come to City Council meeting and I had to go to court. We are running, and the second thing is, I want to know who can I send this information to about this data breach? The people have a right to know that their public information has, their information, their private information hasn't been made public. It's seven people in my portal. So I'm not the only person that receives this information about these people.
So the interim director of planning is right behind you. Mr. Anderson, can you speak with him, and Mr. Wright? They got similar issues. And then you have the interim director of IT over there. Would you mind, Mr. Slater, speaking with him also?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Mr. Hartley?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. Same to you. I want to talk about the dumpsters. Mr. Anderson, could you approach, please?
Yes, sir.
There have been rules out regarding dumpsters, at least for the last year. I've gotten a lot of complaints from, from business owners. And I don't have a problem with the enforcement of those dumpsters, but it needs to be equitable. There's a dumpster at the, there's an area, disposal area at the corner of Bobby Rush Boulevard and Lynch intersection. The waste has been exposed for at least three months. It's just sitting there. And yet, we go after the ones that are covered. And we, there's a lot of calls I'm getting concerning that, so I'm wondering if you could look into it and find out that, and maybe if we can see if we can have a just and equitable program regarding dumpsters. And also, you know, sometimes dumpsters aren't the issues or the most pressing issues for our code enforcement folks. Sometimes our most pressing issues are the overgrown properties and the vacant lots and the burned down houses and et cetera. Yet, we spend a significant amount of time with dumpsters. Like I said, the corner of Highway 80 and Bobby Rush Boulevard, there's a service station there with trash that's been there, garbage been there at a major intersection for at least three or four months. Appreciate it. I reported to code enforcement already, but just checking to our code enforcement officers and their use there. Thank you, sir.
Certainly will. Thank you. We will follow.
Mr. President? Mr. Mayor? At the conclusion of the public comment, I would like to make a comment. It's all yours. We're done? That's it, yes, sir. So I've listened to some of the persons making public comment today, issues of neighborhood, neighbor harassment and child endangerment, some planning and development issues that seem to be meted out unfairly, depending on who it is, election issues, and possible parking fractions. And I will just say this, that was then, this is now. And this is a new administration. We're going to put in the proper kinds of leadership and the proper rules and regulations and the enforcement thereof to ensure that this is a new day in Jackson, Mississippi. Now, it's not going to happen overnight, but our position is, is that we're going to make good on the promises and the commitments we made to the people of Jackson. And that is that we're going to usher in a new day and a new way of doing things. The old ways do not count anymore. We're going to look at issues for the benefit of the good of this city and the citizens. there's a service station there with trash that's been there, garbage been there at a major intersection for at least three or four months. Appreciate it, I reported to code enforcement already. But just check into our code enforcement officers and their use there. Thank you, sir.
Certainly will, thank you. We will follow.
Mr. President?
Mr. Mayor?
At the conclusion of, of the public comment, I would like to make a, a comment.
It's all yours.
Is, 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 we're done?
That's it, yes, sir.
Uh, so, uh, I've listened, uh, to, uh, uh, some of the persons making public comment today. Uh, issues of neighborhood, neighbor harassment and child endangerment, uh, some planning and development issues that, that, uh, seem to be meted out unfairly, depending on who it is, uh, election issues and, uh, possible parking fractions. And I will just say this, that was then, this is now. And, uh, this is a new administration. We're going to put in the, the proper, uh, kinds of leadership and the proper rules and regulations and the enforcement thereof, uh, to, to ensure that this is a new day in Jackson, Mississippi. Now, it's not gonna happen overnight. But our position is, is that we're going to, to make good on the, the promises and the commitments we made to the people of Jackson. And that is that we're going to usher in a new day and a new way of doing things. The old ways do not count anymore. We're going to, to look at issues, uh, for the benefit of the good of this city and, and the citizens. And so I, I would just ask the folks who made the public comments today to bear with us, give us a moment to, uh, get our sea legs under us. But we're gonna bring about the changes, I think, that, that we're all looking for. Thank, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before we move on to the consent agenda, colleagues, I do want to acknowledge some elected officials that are here. Uh, Mayor Horn brought out the city again. Uh, you know, the gala was wonderful, but he'd unpacked City Hall again. Um, we've had Senator Norwood, Solid Norwood here. Uh, we have supervisor District four one, the Evers. Wave your hand, Ms. Warner, alright. Supervisor District two, uh, Tony Smith, alright.
Graham, Graham was here.
He, I thought he was here. And Supervisor Robert Graham, District one, was here. Alright, colleagues?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Uh, for the record, uh, and it's something that could pass, but you were right in terms of saying that the public cannot attack council members and employees.
Right.
And I know legal, we need you to be the sergeant at arms of parliamentarian. Not that we're trying to take anybody free speech. And it can always be challenged in the court because you have a constitutional right to free speech. But some council members, when you attack them, they're gonna attack you back. I don't know about anybody.
I know I would.
They're gonna attack you back. Some are gonna be professional and they did, they did go over the, you know, but some are not.
Yeah.
So the way we try to keep this thing going smoothly is not to call any names or direct at anybody. That way it won't get out of control. And I think the president was trying to keep it under control. And he did a good job, but you cannot normally have them posted, the rules posted at the clerk's office on the window so you can see them. Because otherwise you would get somebody mad that come every day, every councilman talking about the mayor, uh, me or somebody. And that way it'll lead to, to things you don't want to see happen in this city. So he was right. You can't, you can't talk about council members, clerks like that. That doesn't mean, that's a, that's a city ordinance. Now, well, it should have been challenged. Anybody can challenge any law that we have. But it is a city ordinance and legal department shaking his head that it is an ordinance. And I know Mr. Mayor, I've been here long enough and I seen it when we used to have those meetings. And Peter was here too, where it'd be so, it'd be a, a whole lot of comeback going on. So, you know, I just hope that we'll follow the lead of the president and let's disagree, disagreeable. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Stokes. And we do have that as section two dash seventy-one, speaking limitations, public comments, council, uh, member, council chamber conduct. And so you cannot, no person shall address the council with reference to any personnel matter during any open meeting of the city council. And that's law. Alright, colleagues, let's go ahead and move to, uh, the consent agenda.
All matters listed under consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from consent agenda and considered separately.
So moved. Second. Alright, colleagues, this has been moved improperly, second. Now, if there is a desire to discuss any of these items individually, you can request to have it removed. But, um, you know, that doesn't always mean you're gonna get what you want. I read the, the stat, the, the order. Uh, so, all in favor?
Mr. Park, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make an amendment to the consent agenda. And that is to pull items four, five, six, and seven. They're all contract items, total dollar amount twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars. So that the administration, the new administration will have the chance to review the contracts in, in detail and bring them back to us at a subsequent meeting.
Second. Okay, it's been moved improperly, second, to amend the consent agenda. Any questions or comments?
There's just one question, I just want to hear from administration, are, are you, uh, you okay with that?
We're comfortable with that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Alright, all in favor? Opposed? Alright, so now we have before us the consent agenda as amended. Yeah. Alright, all in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. Now we have an introduction of an ordinance.
Ordinance amending section one eighteen dash five ninety-five of the city of Jackson Code of Ordinance's Neighborhood Traffic Calming Procedure.
Okay, colleagues, this is just an introduction. Uh, Attorney Martin or someone from legal, can you all come speak on this briefly, please? Here he comes.
Terry Williamson, Office of the City Attorney. Did you just want an overview of this or were there specific questions?
Overview.
Um, okay, so, uh, the city has, uh, a neighborhood, uh, traffic calming procedure. Um, and we, like, last year made some amendments to that, um, to be able to create, um, a more stable, uh, board. Because there, for quite a number of years, we didn't have any traffic calming requests and the board that we had was defunct and it's, um, unless, unless there's like consistent funding through the city, it's only, uh, you know, self-funded projects and there just haven't been a lot of those. And, uh, we did have one neighborhood association come forward with a self-funded project. And so we, uh, you know, stood up the traffic calming committee again as a subcommittee of the, uh, planning board. Um, and we've met a couple times about that. Um, one of the things that they expressed, the members of the traffic calming committee expressed was, um, the fact that the requirement to, uh, on your petition signature was seventy-five percent. Um, and they thought, they thought that was too high. And, uh, they voted to make a recommendation to the council to amend the ordinance to reduce that to sixty percent. So that's what this does essentially, is, is reduce that, um, amount, that requirement from seventy-five percent to sixty percent.
Okay. Mr. Hart, Mr. Foot?
I did it again. Thank you, Mr. President. I, one of the things that, uh, right now, the current, um, there's no funding for, from the city for traffic calming devices.
Right.
But some neighborhoods may not have enough funding to go build their own speed bumps. And I'm curious what the appetite on the council is to put some money in, into the, um, that part of the budget. So that if a neighborhood want, neighborhood feels they'll really benefit from a traffic calming device, that the city might actually pay for construction of a speed bump in their particular neighborhood. I mean, I don't, I'm curious what everybody, if anybody has.
Mr. Hartley? Yes, I, I, I agree. I, uh, when we're talking, talking, uh, calming, we're talking speed bumps. And, uh, a lot of neighborhoods have folks trying to circumvent intersections and so forth, and they'll cut through the neighborhood. Uh, and, you know, we need to have some money in the, in the budget. If we would going forward, during our budget deliberations in August, if we could look at adding something in there for, for, um, street calming, speed bumps. Thank you, sir.
Mr. President? Mr. Stokes?
Uh, thank you. Mr. President, uh, most of the speed bumps money came from the federal government. So the two councilmembers are correct, we need to put some in the budget. And, Mr. Mayor, I know we got a lot of different headaches and, you know, we used to use fund balance money. Money that's not spending the prior budget year could be used for speed bumps and those kind of things. Now, and for some reason, all that has not been completed and been two years and longer and those kind of things are not acceptable, but you're exactly right. Poor neighborhoods can't afford to pay for speed bumps like neighborhoods will for little money, like with the gates. Poor neighborhoods, they'll receive gates because they can't afford the gates. So somewhere down the line, we got to be a city of warning, where we help the needy and not just the greedy. We got to help everybody. So them doughboys speeding through them neighborhoods on them chase, those speed bumps will help us. So we need speed bumps and I hope that, uh, we can get the budget, we can get it put in the budget, but I hope that we can get some fund balance money. And I, I look over there at Peter Taberson and, you know, I'll never forget my days when I left the city and went to the county. We brought Peter to the county as the county attorney. And my only request was to keep us out of the penitentiary.
That was a good request.
Yeah, he did. So I look at him now.
That's a good man.
Keep us out of jail. So we got, that's a good man over there who can handle this business. And I'm not, I'm not at all concerned about us doing the right thing. I bet you we're gonna get speed bumps and things that need to be done. I'm not even worried, Mr. Mayor, I know y'all gonna get it done. But these councilmembers said let's put some money in the budget to make sure that the excuse we hear all the time ain't no money in the budget.
Alright.
Um, one other issue, um, is a requirement for a traffic calming study. And, and, uh, previously, when, when, you know, when we had a, uh, you know, a, a full, uh, engineering division in Public Works, we could do that in-house. But, uh, you know, currently we don't have that ability. So, um, until we, you know, have that, um, in addition to the cost of the speed bump would be, you know, the cost of hiring an engineering consultant to do that, uh, traffic study.
Alright, thank you so much. Colleagues, let's go on to, uh, item number twelve, claims.
Order approving.
One second.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to jump ahead. When you get to regular agenda, I would like to pull several items. I jumped a little bit ahead.
Okay, well, we can do that now.
Okay. Uh, Mr. President, yesterday in work session, um, council members had a number of questions on items that were prepared and submitted for this agenda being prepared by the last administration, whether the, uh, new administration has had an opportunity to review them. I was candid in that we are trying to balance keeping the business of the city moving with, um, jumping in at game speed, that we have not reviewed every item. Um, we did go back after the work session yesterday, the mayor and I, and go through, and we'd like to pull six of these, those being items fourteen, eighteen.
Oh, slow, slow, hold, hold. Fourteen.
Eighteen.
Eighteen.
Twenty. Twenty-one.
Twenty, twenty-one.
Twenty-eight. And twenty-nine.
Twenty-eight and twenty-nine. Alright, colleagues, you got that?
Oh, yeah. Thank you again, as I said yesterday, want to say it again for the public. We will do our best over the first thirty days or so to balance continuing the ongoing business of the city with making sure that we can fully inform you on each item. And I appreciated your questions yesterday and that gave us an opportunity again last night to look a little closer. Thank you.
Thank you, and we appreciate your engagement, Mr. Taberson. Alright, claims. Mr. Melon Becker, would you, don't mind reading the large claims, please? I'm sorry, my bad.
Order approving claims appearing at pages five, three, four, two, inclusive thereon, on municipal docket of claims in the amount of three million, eight hundred thirty-six thousand, one hundred eighty-six dollars and thirty-six cents, or make an appropriation for the payment thereof.
So moved. Second. Alright, it's been moved improperly, second, any questions or comments? Mr. Melon Becker, if you could read the large claims, please?
Good morning, Fidelis Melon Becker, interim CFO. Uh, the following represents the four largest claims on this docket. Uh, they are as follows. First, emergency equipment profession in the amount of eight hundred forty-nine thousand, two hundred dollars, paid out of Fund eighty-five, CDBG. This is if, this is for a Pierce Sabre customer pumper, uh, which is a fire truck. Second is Entergy in the amount of three hundred sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred forty-five dollars and eighty-nine cents, paid out of Fund one, general fund. This is for streetlights. Third, mobile concepts specialty vehicles in the amount of two hundred twenty thousand, seven hundred eighty-nine dollars and twenty-nine cents, paid out, out of Fund four, four, six, JAG grant. This is for vehicle for mobile crime unit. And the fourth is Kirk Auto World in the amount of two hundred nineteen thousand, four hundred fifty-two dollars, paid out of Fund nine, landfill sanitation. This is for, uh, trucks for solid waste.
Thank you, Mr. Melon Becker. Now, colleagues, I want claims to pass today, so I'm gonna make an amendment. Um, I've moved that we remove, uh, mobile concept specialty vehicles in an amount of two hundred thirty-eight thousand, six hundred thirty-four thousand dollars. There is some unreadiness about this item and I think we really need to talk about it, probably in a finance committee. Can I get? Alright, it's been moved improperly, second, any questions or comments? All in favor? Opposed? It was seven zero, okay, thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Uh, first large item was, uh, for a fire truck. Uh, I, I support that idea. But have we always used community development block grants funds for that?
I, I don't have any history with that. Um, I, I know, uh, this was, uh, the first time the planning department brought it forth. Uh, because, uh, they were given a deadline, uh, to expand certain, um, CDBG grant funds, um, by August second. Right, and so they did a, a public notice, uh, to include, uh, the fire truck and some repairs, uh, to, I think, Fire Station twenty-four.
So you're saying that if we did not use these funds in this manner, the money would go back?
Correct, they were, they were given up until August second.
Are we that far behind in projects? Because it's supposed to be used in the poor neighborhoods.
Yes, so, uh, and it's several years with, uh, CDBG. Um, there, there are several years, right? I think, uh, some might include, uh, twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. Yeah. And we get an allocation, uh, each year.
Alright, colleagues, now we have before us, uh, claims as amended. Any more questions or concerns about claims? All in favor? Opposed? Six, one. Alright, thank you, colleagues. Claims passed. Payroll clerk?
Order approving gross payroll including payroll deduction claims number three, two, one, seven, seven, two, and make an appropriation for the payment thereof.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved improperly, second, any questions or comments about payroll? All in favor? Alright, six, zero, Stokes, that. Alright, thank you. Fourteen has been pulled, number fifteen.
Resolution appointing Mississippi Municipal League twenty-twenty-five voting delegates for the city of Jackson.
So moved. Second, it's been moved improperly, second. Alright, colleagues, so we know that MML is coming upon us and we would need to send two delegates who's gonna do the voting. Now, Mr. Mayor, usually it's the mayor and one other person. Uh, you want to be that, that person?
Well, I'm being unfamiliar with that, I don't, I don't have a problem with it. But, um, uh, I believe that the voting takes place on the final day of, of the conference.
Yes.
And I will not be there for the entire day, but that morning, if I can vote before, before departure that morning, I'd be happy to do so.
Okay. Um, so if it's okay, colleagues, and please weigh in, we could put Mayor Horn down and then, because I know you're going to class, uh, Tina Clay is the alternate, unless somebody else wants to be the alternate? Okay. You fine with that? Alright. Thank you. Alright, all in favor? We need an amendment?
Are we voting on the item or are we just voting on the delegate?
Delegates first.
So when you ask for the vote, are we voting for Mayor Horn and Ms. Clay or are we voting for the whole item?
So the clerk is now saying that we need to amend it to a, to a point. Mr. Hartley?
So moved. A party amendment to appoint, uh, Mayor Horn as primary and, uh, Councilwoman Clay as the alternate.
Alright, so now we have the item as amended bef, oh, we have to vote on it, right? Second. Second. All right, all in favor of the amendment? All right, six, zero. Now we have the item before us as amended. Okay, I'm gonna get better, y'all, I promise. All right. All in favor of the item as amended? Six, zero. All right, thank you. Item sixteen.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a support renewal notice with RICO USA Inc. for a one-year license for the WE Web CRD Digital Workflow Solution and Software Maintenance Agreement to be used by the Department of Constituent Service and Communications Office of Publications.
Some moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved improperly, second. Any questions or comments about this item?
Uh, Mr. President, the item, uh, has down here that along with Mayor Horn, it's got Payne, which is a previous, um, communications person. Who is that? Um, do you have an interim communications? Okay. I just wanted to find out who the.
But I want to be clear on the record that we don't have to change that, right, clerk? Okay. Any more questions or comments?
No.
All in favor? All right, passes six, zero. Thank you, colleagues. Seventeen.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the City of Jackson and Lacey Lofton Consulting LLC for data science and analytics support services on behalf of the Jackson Police Department.
Some move.
Second.
It's been moved improperly, second. Any questions or comments, colleagues? Mr. Harley?
Yeah, just a, just a comment, uh, Ms. Lofton, uh, and, uh, just to the administration. Uh, Ms. Loft, Lofton is our data scientist, has been around for a while, and I, I would just ask that you'll make, you know, full use out of her and the GIS, uh, and, and all database processing going forward.
Councilman Harley, I had the opportunity to spend a little time with her yesterday in the morning.
Yes.
She impressed me, and she volunteered to, um, do some things that were across city. One of the things we're gonna start looking at is the number of fires, especially repeat fires in South Jackson. Uh, 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 our new fire chief has identified that that is an issue. Uh, Ms. Lofton has said she can help us compile some data so we can better track that. I've got some other ideas, so yes, Mr. Harley, I channeled you, I've met with her, and I agree.
Thank you, sir. And, uh, if you could, please share some of that information with the BLIGHT Task Force as well for us documenting the houses burned down and, and so forth.
You're gonna want a, uh, report on that later on?
Yeah, just say your name and your title.
I don't do this often, ladies and gentlemen. Um, Lacey Lofton, I am the data scientist for the City of Jackson, or I was previously, hopefully to be renewed. Thank you.
Thank you. I will, I will say, Dr. Lofton is, is an amazing brain. She provides a lot of data that allows our public safety, uh, departments to make data-driven decisions, and so I really appreciate your work.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, and I'll just hope that reports that you prepare for the chief and for others will be shared with council as well.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Any more questions or comments? All in favor? Six, zero. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Number nineteen.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding with the Westside Civic Club, WCC, for a matching grant for in-kind services.
Some move. Second. Give the second to Ms. Clay. All right, it's been moved improperly, second. Colleagues, any questions or comments? All right. Hearing none. All in favor? All right, six, zero. Thank you. Number twenty-two, colleagues?
Order ratifying and approving payment to Robert J. Young for providing a Canon Image Runner Advanced Copy used by the Zoning Division of the Planning and Development Department.
Some move. Second. All right, uh, it's been moved improperly, second. Now, any questions or comments? I know we talked about this in, at length yesterday, and, and, uh, Councilman Parkinson raised some questions about finding a way to bundle all of these copiers and printing devices and everything, so we can just hit this at one time and not have them coming throughout the year. And actually, if we bundle them, we may actually be able to save some money. So any questions or comments? All in favor?
Abstain.
All right, six and one abstention? Thank you. Twenty-three.
Order authorizing amendment to the July second, twenty-twenty-four, order authorizing the mayor to execute a contract between the City of Jackson, Carl and Francis Fraser, Ben Wiggins remodeling for the use of Healthy Homes Production Grant Funds to implement housing repair activities under the Department of Planning and Development's Healthy Homes Pro- Production Grant Program.
Some move.
Second.
It's been moved improperly, second. Mrs. Jefferson, you gonna speak on this?
This, this, these questions come up about these items every time, so. Reginald Jefferson, Deputy Director, Housing and Community Development. Uh, as far as the, just give a brief overview.
Just, yes.
Yes. Uh, as was mentioned in the, um, the order, this property is a part of the Healthy Homes Production Grant. Um, normally, when we do the scope of work, uh, the contractor and our, um, officer, they will catch, you know, certain items that need to be prepared. Uh, there are times during the rehab that the contractor finds other items that need to be addressed in the home. Uh, in that case, that's when we will have change orders. Uh, so that's what this particular item is. Uh, it is coming across the council to address the change order for the work that's being done at that particular property.
Okay. Colleagues, any other questions, comments? Yes, please.
Yes, sir.
Um, Mr. Jefferson, my first concern was that, um, South Jackson, uh, used to not be considered, uh, an area that really needed a lot of help. You know, we're talking about some of these older neighborhoods. But if you're not riding into South Jackson often now, you can see it need a whole, whole, whole lot of help.
Right.
You know, they burned down whole apartment complexes, all kind of stuff going on. Now, this is just a small step. What's your major plan?
Uh, yes, that's one of the things that my staff and I, we've, you know, gotten together. It's one of the things that we would like to do. Uh, with the funding that we have, it is limited. So the way to make the greatest impact, we believe, is to have targeted approaches, uh, with our grant funding. And we'll go to different areas, and we will, uh, use those resources in those areas, so we'll see a bigger impact instead of the, the kind of spot, spot work. Uh, so right now, uh, we are still fleshing out some of the details, but we are looking to have, uh, something, um, sort of a, uh, revalidization, um, stability, so to speak, where we'll go to different, uh, areas. Right now, we are looking at, um, going to neighborhoods that have been organized. For example, uh, Georgetown Community, uh, to have, they've been organized, they are five oh one C three. Uh, it makes it easier to be able to work with those entities, because with our grants, uh, we keep, we usually work with nonprofits. So what we're looking at, uh, taking some of our funds, CDBG, as well as Home, uh, to look at, uh, public facilities, city-owned facilities, as well as residential facilities, and pouring our resources into those so we can see a bigger impact.
And, and I support that. My concern is, when I went in South Jackson, I was across from People's Miller School, a whole apartment complex is burnt out, gone almost. We got to do something about these apartment complexes near these schools, cause a child gonna get hurt. And that's got to be the priority, children. That's too much danger for a child leaving school or something like that. And I know you can't solve all these problems, and you got a big, big fight on your hands, but we got to pay some real close attention where children are in danger. You know, I, I agree with what you're trying to do in Georgetown. We got people who trying to help buy houses, but there's no children in danger there, like across from People's Miller School. And that's a brand-new school almost, to have that whole apartment complex destroyed. I don't know who set them on fire, when, cause I don't go in South Jackson that often, but we depend on you to help guide us, and I want to tell you, you're doing a good job. I know it's a big problem, and I don't want you to get discouraged because you on the right track. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions or colleagues?
To that, to that point. One of the things that we want to do right out of the chute is to begin the process of putting a market value analysis together for the city. Uh, and that will become the basis for putting together a comprehensive plan for development of the city and redevelopment of the city. Uh, and blight elimination is one of the things that is a top priority for us. I met with the planning and development staff on last week, and indicated to them that I want them to, to use whatever resources that are available that we can direct towards blight elimination, and South Jackson is where we're gonna start that elimination.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Stokes?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, uh, I just want to say thank you, cause many, many years ago, when some people, old as I am, remember when Jenny Jungle pulled out of Jackson, it was you and I telling anybody who would listen, who got those grocery stores again, especially in the poor neighborhoods. And I know as a developer, and I tell people, it's not gonna just be Madison Rank County Development any longer. Jackson gonna get back in the business of developing their city where we can compete against these ranking miles and counties without making excuses. We can't just keep saying what they doing it cause they white. We got to get in the ballgame, have property really developed, show that we gonna make this city safe, and we gonna get in here and fight. And I know you can do it, you did it before, and some people gonna check and say, can you sure? When Jenny Jungle left out of here, we had a lot of stores closed. We didn't have grocery stores. And Mayor, you might remember, I forgot who was the mayor at the time, but you came in there and brought, I know, three or four different grocery stores in this city. So if you say you gonna do it, we're gonna give you a chance to do it. Thank you.
Mr. President, if I may, uh, it was, it was Winn Dixie, uh, that, that I think bought out Jenny Jungle, and we were able to, uh, convince McDade's to go in at Western Plaza Food Depot, uh, on North Side Drive, and also, um, uh, the, um, Save-A-Lot at the Medical Mall.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Parkinson?
To the mayor's point on a market value analysis, I'll just note, at one point, I saw Savannah in the chambers. I'm not sure if she's still here, but she's an organizer with working together, Jackson, and they are underway on a market value analysis. That should be ready very soon.
All right, thank you. Any more questions or comments? All in favor? Seven, zero. All right, thank you, colleagues. Item twenty-four.
Order ratifying the submission of a certified local government grant and authorizing the mayor to accept a certified local government grant for the twenty-twenty-five fiscal year from the Mississippi Department of Archives and History for the purpose of preparing nominations for the Josh Habbert Garden and Thelma Marra Hall to the nomination, to the National Register of Historic Places.
Some move. Second. It's been moved improperly, second. Any questions or comments, colleagues? Hearing none. All in favor? Seven, zero. All right, thank you, colleagues. Item twenty-five.
Order amending and authorizing the mayor to execute contracts totaling two hundred eighteen thousand, eight hundred thirty-three dollars and twelve cents between the City of Jackson and various community-based organizations for the use of twenty-twenty-three Community Development Block Grant Funds from Department of Housing and Urban Development to implement public service activities in the Jackson Metropolitan Statistical Area.
Some move. Second. It moved improperly, second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor? Seven, zero. All right, thank you, colleagues. Moving right along today, y'all. All right, number twenty-six, clerk?
Order authorizing the mayor to execute the application in supplemental form with the United States Department of Transportation Federal Transit Administration to apply for the FY twenty-twenty-five competitive funding opportunity entitled Bus and Bus Facilities Grant Program in the amount of three million, five hundred thousand dollars, and authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement and related documents upon award of grant funds.
Some move. Second. Been moved improperly, second. Any questions or comments, colleagues?
Come in.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Anderson, Mr. Mayor, we keep bringing this up, we need benches at these bus stops. People sitting on the ground, I'd say sitting on the dirt. We got to get some benches for people to sit on. And I know they say that, well, we need right-of-way and, and, uh, ADA and all of that, that sound good, but when you got older citizens leaning on a little pole and those kind of things, they blaming us. As we put benches out there for them to sit on, and they waiting on the bus that might be late, they'll feel a lot better about this city and about us, because they know that we care about what they going through. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Stokes. Christine Welch, Transit Services. This particular grant is solely for that purpose. We heard you, and that's what we're seeking out in this competitive grant here. It's solely to provide benches, shelters, uh, throughout this city as much as we awarded in the funding. This is just an ask.
Well, thank you. Let me say thank you first. Uh, but I want to make sure that once we start, uh, placing benches, that we're not gonna lead the poor neighborhoods out of the formula. Now, we have some benches, but very few ever make it to the poor neighborhoods, and that's why we saying let's put them in all neighborhoods, and I hope this grant go through, but if it does not, uh, Mr. Mayor, we need benches in these poor neighborhoods. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Colleagues, any more questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor? Seven, zero. All right, thank you. Passes. Clerk, item twenty-seven.
Order authorizing the mayor to apply to the United States Department of Transportation Federal Transit Administration for the Congressional Apportionment under Section five-three-zero-seven of the Title Forty-nine of the United States Code Urbanized Area Grant for Transit Capital Operating Assistance and Transportation Related Plan in the amount of three million, six hundred sixty-nine thousand, six hundred and one dollars, and for the Congressional Apportionment under Section five-three-three-nine of the Title Forty-nine of the United States Code Bus and Buts and Bus Facilities Formula Program in the amount of two hundred ninety-one thousand, five hundred and ninety-one dollars.
Some move. Second. It's been moved improperly, second. Any questions or comments? All right, Mr. Foot?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mr. President. The, so there's two different numbers here. One's three point six-six-nine million, and then down below, there's two hundred and ninety-one thousand. Can someone tell me what the, the two dollar, what the amounts are for? This, the, there's, what's the difference between the three point six million and the two, two hundred ninety-one thousand?
Christine Welch, Transit Services. The, the first amount is the fifty-three oh seven funding that, this is our nat- normal appropriation that we receive from the federal government. The fifty-three oh seven funding is using for, used primarily for operations, preventive maintenance, and things of that nature.
Okay.
The fifty-three thirty-nine funding is for capital items, in which this year, we're taking that two hundred and ninety-one thousand federal dollars with a match of seventy-two thousand, eight ninety-eight, and we're solely using that for the purpose of benches and shelters to see if we could, as far as those fundings will go within the city.
So the two hundred ninety-one thousand will go towards the benches, then?
Correct, sir.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any more questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor? Seven, zero. Thank you, colleagues. Now we're gonna move down to number thirty. Clerk?
Order authorizing mayor to execute a right-of-way and ameesment instrument with Atmos Energy Corporation to assist in the relocation of a natural gas line off the campus of Jackson State University.
Some move. Second. It's been moved improperly, second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor? Seven, zero. Mentioned Jackson State gets things done around here. Item thirty-one, clerk?
Order accepting the bid of Samsung Equipment Company, Inc., for a Broome Street Sweeper that does not require a commercial driver's license to operate, bid number seven-six-five-seven-seven-dash-zero-four-one-five-two-five.
Some move. Second. It's been moved improperly, second. Any questions or comments? We talked about this yesterday in, um, work session. Colleagues, any questions?
Just not a, but a comment, and that is, uh, I think, uh, Councilman Foot has something too, but my only prom, uh, comment is this, when we get the schedules, can you share those with the council? Uh, street sweeping schedule, uh, right-of-way cleaning schedule, litter pickup schedule, share that with the council, and we may have some cleanup projects in that area, may have[1750.72] another program. We certainly appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Foot?
Thank you, Mr. President. My question is, so we get this broom street sweeper, which I think is great, the, where's it going to be maintained? And then who determines what the schedule is? It's got Mr. Wright down here, obviously, he's not here. So who, who's in charge of the broom sweeper, cleaner, if we need something to be swept?
Terry Williamson, Officer of the City Attorney. The Infrastructure Management Division purchased this, so I would assume at this point, unless the administration wants to do something differently, that James Caldwell would be responsible for having it operated and developing a schedule with the administration.
So does it stay out at the motor pool on it?
I would stay out at, yeah, it would be out at Michael Avalon when it wasn't being used.
Is it just, do we have to drive it all the way from there to Mo Jackson if they wanted to use it? Or do they have a vehicle that carries it around, or how's it?
I, I, that I don't know. I'm not that far in the weeds on it.
Mr. President?
Mr. Stokes? Thank you. How many? How many? The question I'm going to ask, how many do we currently have? But I know you haven't had enough time to see, because we used to have street sweepers.
This is, this is the only one that I'm aware of that we, that we have.
What about the others? Are they tore up, broke, can be repaired, or they gone? They've been trashed?
That's, that's my understanding.
They all been trashed?
I, I, I don't know. I'm unaware that they're doing any street sweeping, so.
Now, I remember seeing one on Martin Luther King right before the MLK parade. I know we got, we got at least one. But I do want to tell Mr. Foot, you know, this one does not require a CDL, so all of us can pitch here and drive this one if we need.
That's right. Mr. Foot, if you want to, if you want to go pick it up and sweep and.
Drive it there. Drive it there. We good to go. All right, colleagues, any more questions or comments? All right, all in favor? Seven zero. All right, thank you. Item thirty-two, clerk.
Order authorize the mayor to execute amendment number one to the Professional Engineering Services Agreement with Neil Schaefer, Inc. to develop and execute the Closure and Remediation Action Plan at the City of Jackson Rubbishfield.
So move.
Check.
It's been moved improperly second. Any questions or comments? Mr. Harley?
Yes, is there anyone that could speak to this item?
I can speak to the items specifically now, if it's general questions about the landfill.
Just, just general questions, and I guess it's directed also to the administration.
Here's Ms. Weathers.
And as she make her way up, Mr. Mayor, I believe that our, our landfill is one of our precious resources, and we have to keep that thing up. Right now, if this is introducing a way to get limbs off the street, then I'm all for it. I just want to hear more about it. But we, I believe we need to do a citywide effort to clean up limbs and clean up the sides of the street and cut them down. And if this is going to help, then we need to, we need to go ahead and do that. From what I'm, what I've been told, this is the old site. Mr. Taywesson, you may have been involved during your time. We were looking at approving an old site down, or a new site down at the landfill, and it kept going through iteration after iteration with DEQ. Well, I think that is still open now. And if we can do a massive cleanup around the city and we have a place to dispose of those limbs, I think, I think we can, you know, it'll be the best of both worlds. We can save ourselves a lot of money, therefore cleaning up the city in the same, in the same vein. If this is that same sale, we could maybe work with DEQ to minimize the amount of time it takes to get it per minute, and we can get on about to clean up the city.
Mr. President?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Councilman Harley, I was about to call you Senator.
Speaking.
You're reading my mind.
Yes, sir.
And that's why we did not oppose this item on the agenda. We want to get these cells open just as quickly as we possibly can for the purpose that you just described. We need to clean up our city and having a place to dispose of refuse and be able to dispose of things is essential. So, yes, sir.
Thank you so much, sir.
Mr. Stokes?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, are there plans to look at Richards and the Richards contract during the contract term that was brought to the council agenda attention that Richards was not the lowest bid now? And I don't want to put all this on your plate, and we brought it up then. The concern is that they're passing trash in the city on their trucks, and they won't pick it up. They say, well, that's not part of the contract. Well, the city is so dirty because we do not have the garbage people who really going to be a hundred million dollar contract over ten years. We do not have the corporation. People call our office every day. We ask them to pick up this, and they won't pick it up. And I'm not saying it's long, long stuff or trunks of trees. It's simple things that they could pick up and helping the city with a contract. Now, the first thing I asked was whether or not we're going to look back at that contract and see whether or not they were low biders, low bidder or not. And if not, then, you know, we don't want to go into a situation where trash is not picked up, but we need to know what steps need to be taken to make sure low biders are rewarded in this city. And we're not going to just disqualify people who are low bidder because we trying to give it to somebody else. Thank you.
And, Mr. President, if I could address the.
Mr. Mayor?
As I understand it, successive boards have every right to review contracts and to bring them back up for further review and possibly for making a change or modification or an abolition of a contract, except state law says that solid waste contracts are excluded. So we cannot go back and look at the Richards contract, even though there may be an appetite for us to do so. But as I understand it, it will be close to the end of our four-year term before that contract comes up for review, and we will take appropriate actions at that time. Anything else, colleagues? All right, hearing none.
If we could, could we have just a brief synopsis of the sale and what this is going to entail?
Brief, please.
Lakeisha Weathers, Solid Waste Manager, brief. Yes, this remediation plan, the closure plan, is a part of the process of reopening the landfill. We have to close the existing cell to move into the new cell. However, with the expansion cell, Councilman Harley, we have to have the equipment to operate in that cell. So I am requesting that we sit down with the finance team to discuss getting those pieces of equipment on lease purchase so we can move forward with opening a new cell.
And we don't have any timeframe. Is DEQ giving us any deadlines?
We acquire that equipment, we can move into the new cell.
Okay, and what equipment exactly are we going to be using?
Bulldozers and excavators.
Pardon?
Dozer, excavators.
A dozer and an excavator?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a way to rent that till we can?
No, it's going to cost you more. You might as well go ahead and purchase it. Then you have a maintenance plan and all of that that goes along with it. It'll be better to purchase.
Do you have any bottom line figures? 1.5 million, 2 million?
No. The bulldozer was 192, and the excavators were 148 apiece. Well, one was 148, one was 170 something.
Okay, so that's roughly in the neighborhood of $500,000. Half a million dollars that we could work towards getting our landfill open, get all the limbs and all that off the street, drop them in there.
However, we are still picking up limbs across the city, but I do understand what your request is in regards to them being able to take it to the landfill themselves. But we do still have the community cleanups where we're going around utilizing our boom truck to pick up limbs across the city outside of our roll-off dumpster days where residents can utilize that for disposal of limbs debris as well.
Thank you. And there's one thing for the administration. You know, I know you will have a lot of priorities. I think if we could hand walk a lot of this through to make sure we go ahead and get it worked on and clean the city up, I'd be open for that, any type of short changes or shortcuts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues, I'm going to go ahead and call for the vote. All in favor? Seven zero. Thank you, colleagues. Item thirty-three, clerk.
Order authorizing payment of full and final settlement of all claims in the matter of Nakita Freeman versus City of Jackson, Mississippi, in the County Court of Heinz County, Mississippi, First Judicial District Civil Action Number 24-347.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved improperly second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor? Seven. All right, thank you. Item thirty-four.
Thank you, Mr. President.
We got to get on the floor, Councilor.
All right.
I know you're excited.
Clerk?
Order of the City Council of Jackson, Mississippi authorizing a grant to support the 15th Annual Doggone Edition Festival, Rander and Janice Adams, in the amount of $10,000.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved improperly second. Any questions or comments?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Stokes? Thank you. Mr. President, that festival is so special, not just to West Jackson, but for really all of Jackson. Numbered young people, as they go to school, they do not have simple things, paper, pencils, pens, things we take for granted. And this husband and wife team saw a mission, and they got involved. And they started the festival, and Dr. Lula helped us with Jim Hill. They would come, and the band would be the back-to-school parade. But anything we can do to encourage young people not to drop out of school, we need to do it. And I know as some people say, not having a paper and pencil might make you drop out. They feel out of place. They see the people in the classroom with them have everything to go to school with, and they don't. And we not pulling fingers. Some families, father might be in prison or walked away, mama might be on drugs. It's up to us to help them, you know? I thank them for helping. They've been doing it 15 years, 15 years, caring about other people, children, and neighbors. That's what we used to do. We cared about each other. You know, we still give away school supplies. We was at Christian Brotherhood last week. We give water because somebody helped me. I never forget, I was walking to school, first grade, crying. Little garbage man asks, what's wrong? I ain't have lunch money. He gave me lunch money. The person that we help today might be the doctor who find the cure to cancer. We can't look down on people. We need to help everybody we can help, and we thank God. Now, Mr. and Ms. Adams, they're here, Mr. President, if anybody need to hear from them, we'll bring them up, Mr. and Ms. Adams, because it's important that when they come to the city, the city understand where we come from, and that we want to help the needy, as I said before, and not the greedy. You got to introduce yourselves.
Good morning and congratulations, Mayor Horn, former Judge Peter Taywesson, and the Honorable City Council Members. We humbly come before you asking that you join us in helping our babies go back to school without a cloud over their heads. These are babies who don't have supplies. As the Councilman stated, most of them parents eat on drugs, in jail, or out there on the streets. And so we started this, this will be our 15th year, and this is the neighborhood that Rander, my husband and I grew up in. We no longer live there, but some of the parents reached out to us and asked us, will we please help them? And y'all, we couldn't say no. Normally, we do get assistance from the city for those members who are here that knows that, but last, we was told the city didn't have any money. I did ask with the RFP process, but we was told they didn't have any money, so I didn't proceed with that. We have no vendors, simply because we know that the parents or the people in that neighborhood don't have money like others. So we, everything is free. We give away book bags with school supplies. We give away food for the babies. We have hot, and I call them babies because they are our babies. We give away hot dogs, hamburgers. We have, the county has assisted, how you do supervisor, Wanda Evans, and Tony, I saw you. The county has been, and Graham, the county has assisted us somewhat, but we need more. We need more, and that's why we standing here humbly asking that you give us some assistance. I do have an itemized list for those who don't know where the money goes or who have not ever been out there. And I didn't make seven, I only made one, but sorry about that. But that's an itemized list of what we do with the money. As I stated, everything is free. We don't charge for anything. We have water slides, bounce houses. And even though it's free, y'all, you do know that to put this on, it costs. It's free to, and not just the West Jackson community, which is in Washington addition. Any child within the City of Jackson is, I guess, a book bag. We don't discriminate. Any child that come to us get a book bag filled with supplies. They don't, and the look on those babies faces, y'all, that's why my husband and I keep doing what we do. The look on those baby faces is priceless. It's priceless. We didn't think we was going to be able to do it this year. I just want to say that because Rander was diagnosed with prostate cancer, and my priority was to my husband. But by the grace of God, he had the surgery, and within a month's time, it progressed from stage one to stage two. So we decided to have the surgery, and last week, he was given a good bill of health at the cancer center. Remission.
And briefly, piggybacking on what my wife just said about the 15th Annual Doggone Edition Festival, many of you have been there, you know what we do there, you have saw the results that we rendered there, and I would just like to say, piggybacking on, first of all, what Councilman Parkinson said and my wife alluded to moments ago, even though this event is free, it does cost. The logistics does cost, and in order for it to be as successful as it has been over the years, we need the funds. Mayor Horn, piggybacking on what you say, this event built on hope, but let me add to that. We want to provide substance, and we want to provide vision along with hope, because with substance and vision, the youth that we serve out there, as Councilman Stokes said, may be the doctor that find the cure to cancer. That may be the encouragement that needed, because who says where this knowledge come from of tomorrow that helps improve what's going on in our lives today? So we humbly ask for your assistance for the 15th Annual Doggone Edition Festival. I saw it too, baby.
I was going to make sure you say that. Mr. Harley?
Yes, Mr. Anderson, first of all, thank you for everything you do for Ward Five.
Thank you.
Washington Edition. I know that you're down like four, like four flat tires.
That's right. Ten toes down.
You believe in the Washington Edition.
And thank you, Councilman Harley, excuse me for interrupting, for you being staunch sponsor this year, making it happen. You said, we got to make it happen this year, and I'm with you 100%.
And Senator Noah Wood here, he's a staunch supporter of the Doggone Edition Festival.
As this goes on.
Yeah, I mean, I see a lot of y'all out here that support us, and thank you.
Yeah, and we, we, you know, this is, this is, this is home tradition. This is what we do. This is community.
That's right.
We need to make this happen. And to my colleagues, I think it came up yesterday during the, during the work session, they weren't given the grant opportunity, and I think they mentioned some of the reasons why, sickness in the family, and told that, no, there weren't any money, et cetera. So I guess what I'm asking is that we do something a little different, recognizing the historical tradition of this Washington Edition, recognizing the impact it is on our community and our children. I ask that we still support this in lieu of having a grant.
Thank you, Councilman.
Mr. Parkinson?
Thank you so much. First, I'm.
Thank you so much. Um, first, I'm relieved to hear that there's progress. And so, congratulations on entering our mission, and I hope that continues. I also want to commend the DJ and, and Ms. Adams. They came to a convening of leaders of, of Ward Seven community members, and, um, I appreciate you letting all of them know about the festival as well. And so, um, communities across Ward Seven are excited about this, and, uh, we're, we're pleased, and, uh, I'm here, I'm happy to hear that the county is supporting it as well, so it's got a broad base of support. Um, I'm also pleased to hear that, uh, you provided a detailed, uh, budget and what the money is, is intended to be spent on. So I appreciate that. I think this is a wonderful festival. Um, I will, I do know, I fully support the festival. I know that there are concerns that, uh, there's a lot of i's on our city right now, and making sure that things are, we've got our i's dotted and our t's crossed. And so, I would propose an amendment that, um, as part of these funds, we would ask that the couple provide within 90 days of the festival either a written, a summary of how the, how the, how the event went, or come and present to us at a council meeting just to wrap that up and make sure that everything is accounted for.
That's agreeable.
So I would, I would propose that amendment that, um, thank you.
Second. It's been moved improperly second twice. Any questions or comments on the amendment? Hearing none, all in favor?
How do you vote?
Councilman abstain. All right, six in favor, one abstain, one abstention on the amendment. All right, so now we have the most, well, we have the, the item as amended in front of us. Any other questions or concerns, colleagues? Okay. Now, I'm gonna speak for me. Because I feel like this go pass, and that's a great thing. But because of how it's done, and yesterday there was some questions about what fund is coming from and all that kind of stuff. Uh, you know, we're keepers of the, of the wallet, so we gotta be really responsible. But also, there are other organizations that I'm tied to that were denied the grant. And so, I'm just looking at setting a precedence here. And so, for me, and my sanity and my life, I'm going, I say that jokingly, okay? Ain't nobody trying to put no death threat on me. But I'm gonna abstain from this. I support y'all. I'm gonna come through again this year, but in terms of my vote, I'm gonna abstain. All right? Colleagues, anything else? Hearing none, all in favor? It's five. Opposed? Abstain? Two. All right.
Mr. President?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilman Stokes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for what you do.
Thank you so much, Mr. President, and, um, and I can understand abstaining and everything. Uh, the way we did it, put it on the agenda like we did with deciding the next item, is how the council used to operate. It's not like it's illegal for the council to put these items on the agenda. And I don't want anyone to feel uncomfortable. And I never ask anybody to do something they don't feel comfortable with. But sometimes, uh, the executive branch and the city employees make some tough decisions. But sometimes the city council has the authority to make some decisions also. And when the executive branch has dropped the ball, we must pick the ball up and help the needy. Because these children, uh, it's a shame. I was in New Orleans, they talking about the killings that happened on 4th of July. We gotta do everything we can to stop these killers in this city and let these young people know we love them.
Thank you. I completely agree with you, and I just want to be clear in terms of my position. Yesterday, we were informed that most of the grant funds were already committed. So it's gonna be on the administration to go and try to find those funds. Mr. Parkinson?
Yeah, I appreciate that clarification. It's my understanding that the original grant amount was for a significantly larger amount, and that that amount was cut shorter. And so, I, I do hope that for future budget years, we can fully fund that grant. And then, it is my hope that every request such as these can go through that grant. And moving forward, we won't have one-off requests. But in the interim, I do think it's fair to consider these in, in this order.
Thank you. Item 25, no, I'm sorry, 35.
Order of the City Council of Jackson, Mississippi, authorizing a grant to support the Jackson Music Awards of $25,000.
So moved. Second. All right, colleagues, it's been moved improperly second. Any questions or comments? Ms. Stokes?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the, the best program, uh, awards program, not, not just in Mississippi, not just in Jackson, really in the United States of America. They're gonna make sure that all council members are invited and can participate, so you can see firsthand. What you see in Los Angeles, California, and all these other places is second compared to what we do in Jackson, Mississippi. And what make it so special, they have been doing this for 51 years. 51 years. You know, I smile because we have people on this council not 50 years old yet. So it, it, it's, it's great for this community. It's, it's great that sometimes we run into problems that people who could sponsor will not. But we can't let them drop the ball. There's a lot of businesses that should get involved and make this a reality. And I thank Maliko Recus over the years. They got involved early. Because a lot of people don't understand some of the top gospel entertainers and blues entertainers record right here in Jackson, Mississippi. A lot of people don't see that. They hear Jackson, you think a number bad. But there's a lot of good things take place in Jackson, Mississippi. And I guarantee you, after you go to this, this program, this awards, man, you gonna say, "Ken, you told the truth. It was nice." I haven't been in some years, and, you know, I just haven't felt as good. But I guarantee you're gonna enjoy it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any, Mr. Parkinson?
I'd like to offer a couple amendments. The first is very similar to the last program that we awarded to you. I'd like to make an amendment that if given the funds within 90 days of the event, that the organization comes and either presents us a written report or presents a city council's report on how the event went and how the monies were spent.
Second. All right, it's been moved improperly second. Any questions or comments on the amendment? Hearing none, all in favor? All right, seven. Okay, now we have the item on the floor as amended.
I, I'd like to offer a second amendment.
Okay.
If I may. Um, I fully support this event. I think it's wonderful, fantastic, but balancing the importance of these community events with our responsibility to be fiscally responsible as well, I'd like to make an amendment to, um, to award this organization $15,000 as opposed to $25,000.
Okay, the motion dies for lack of a second. So we still have the motion on the floor as amended initially. Any questions or comments?
Mr. President?
Mr. Stokes?
Um, could I ask, uh, Mr. and Ms. Thompson, who's here, to come? And they can explain why it's so important that we try to get at least $25,000? Because it's really three days of activities. It's blues, it's, uh, gospel, and it's, uh, the third they normally have at the infundring, I think. So I don't have, come, come up in.
Only because he brought his beautiful wife with him. She does, she does.
Good thing.
Okay, thank, uh, thank you. And what was the, what did you want to hear?
State your name for the record for us.
Your name?
State your name for the record.
Jesse Thompson, and my wife.
Judy Thompson.
Thank you. Ms. Stokes?
Uh, Jesse, it's important, uh, it was a reasonable amendment to reduce down from 25 to 15, which is reasonable. Especially, uh, knowing we will have fund balance and those kind of things. All right, we haven't put our old ducks in the road to have a fund balance. But I know with, I think it's three day, three different activities.
We have six, we have six events that, that we, we have our press conference on, uh, Wednesday, July 23rd, at the West End. On Friday night, we have the kickoff reception at Jackson 440. Then on Saturday, we have the City Soul celebrates Mississippi, the birthplace of America's music, at Dooling Hall. Then on Su- Sunday, we have the 47th Annual Mississippi Gospel Music Awards. Then on Monday, we have the 51st Annual Jackson Music Awards. And after that, we have the after-party at Howlin' Miles with the Central Mississippi Blues Society.
And what I was trying to, the $25,000 really is not enough.
Well, we appreciate it.
We trying, because I asked when you said, I said, you said, "We can just get what we had before." We'll try to make it happen.
Yes.
With the expanding of these activities and the awards and everything else, to make sure that this is a competitive, where people come from all over the United States like they do, not just Mississippi, even though we have awards over Mississippi, that it's something that people leave and they say, "It was first class."
Exactly. I want Jackson, I mean, uh, uh, this body has been very supportive of what, what we've done the last 51 years. But it is so significant with what Jackson has contributed, uh, in the music industry. And we shouldn't take it for granted. And on our Saturday night event at Dooling Hall, we're gonna be featuring five blues artists that were featured in the Jacktown USA book that was released, uh, at, on June 26th. Eddie Cotton, Zach Harmon, Stevie J. And also, we'll be presenting our Drum Major Award that night to Liberial Books. Uh, and our Drum Major Award is an award that we present to the Mississippian or the organization that has led the way in entertainment. And this award that they get, the Drum Major Award, was sculpted in the image of a JSU drum major. And so, but when you talk about Mississippi, we have the top choir in the world that comes right out of here off North Side Drive. Bobby Rush is a li- living legend.
That's right.
That is right here in, in Jackson. He'll be one of our featured, uh, uh, artists on, um, Monday, July 28th. So it's a lot that, that goes on, and this council has, and this city has supported us. I'm going back to the Dale Danks administration, so we've never done it without you. So don't y'all break the streak.
Mr. Uh, I, I got you. Uh, Mr. Melanbecker, do you have your eye on the fund, where this money will come from?
Yes. So, and, and it might be a requirement for, uh, budget amendment, right? Uh, you know, there are some unspent dollars through the first, uh, two or maybe three quarters. And, and that's money that generally goes down to fund balance. So, uh, it would require an amendment to the budget.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Harley?
Well, along that same line, first of all, I'd, my hat's off to Mr. Thompson. Uh, Ma- uh, Mayor, you found this interesting. At one point, he and I were one of the only black environmental administrators for MDEQ on a state level. We both had hair back then. But Mr. Thompson has always been, "I am too concerned about where we're going to get this money." And, uh, Mr. Thompson, is this the amount if we could find it?
Sure, yes.
Okay, do you, so is there a next, is there a place where we can find that?
Yes, I mean, there are some unspent dollars, right? Again, it just requires, uh, an amendment.
Okay, I'm, I'm in favor of it then. All right, thank you.
Any other questions, colleagues? I mean, questions or comments, colleagues? And I'm gonna say this, uh, I'm gonna abstain. I'm gonna stick to what I said earlier. I believe it's go pass. And I want it to pass, because I know many years ago, my brother won.
That's right.
Producer of the Year. What album was that? See, it's been so long. It's been so long ago, and I do appreciate the work y'all have done and continue to do. All right, colleagues, anything else? All right, hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? What we looking like? 313. Where is legal?
Can the motion reconsider?
Yeah, you can do it.
Drew Martin, City Attorney, is the question. It was a 3, 4, 3 against, and 1 abstain?
It was 3, 3, 3, 3, 1.
3, 4, 3 against, 1 abstain. Is that correct?
No.
Well, I guess it doesn't matter. The bottom line is, with seven members, you need four to pass.
Got it.
Motion reconsider.
Second. All right, it's been moved and properly second to reconsider this item. All right, legal?
Need to pa- the, the motion reconsider is on the floor.
Oh, wait, all in favor to reconsider? Opposed? Abstain? 5, 511. Okay, legal?
What's the question?
I don't know, you turn your mic on.
You need four, you need four votes out of seven to carry the motion.
Gotcha.
Four affirmative votes. An abstain does not count for the majority when you're trying to count the majority.
Gotcha. Let's get it on the floor, please. Clerk?
Order of the City Council of Jackson, Mississippi, authorizing a grant to support Jackson Music Awards of $25,000.
So moved. Second. All right, it's been moved improperly second. Any questions or comments?
This is voting with the amendment that I provided. That was what was recalled by Mr. Stokes, is that correct?
Do we need to make that amendment again? Or is, is we reconsidering the same thing as amended, correct?
Yes, the, uh, the item on the floor is still amended because the motion to amend passed earlier.
All right.
The first motion to amend.
Gotcha. All right. Any questions or comments? All in favor? How many is that?
That's three.
Nays? Abstentions? All right, it passes. You glad your wife pretty?
Beautiful. Really, Jesse.
You need to go everywhere with him.
You're a lucky man, Jesse.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. And help him remember what award he won for Producer of the Year, whatever album that was. Thank you. All right, number 36.
Order authorizing the city attorney to initiate legal action against the Canadian Pacific Kansas City Railroad, Railway, my bad. Kansas City Southern Railway Company for obstruction of public right-of-way at Fortification Street and Maple Street, and at Prentice Street and Fortification Street.
So moved. Second. All right, it's been moved improperly second. Uh, Councilman Stokes, you brought forward this item.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Mr. President, uh, when we first brought this item before us, they moved the trains. And when I got back in town yesterday, they are back blocking the streets, the right-of-way. What make this so, um, awful is that past years, 10 years or longer, they used to consider that their rail yard, where they would put the trains on the tracks. They built a rail yard in Rankin County to make sure that we didn't have this problem any longer. So they had a rail yard in Rankin County, but they still blocking the tracks in Jackson. And they started this a few weeks ago. And emergency vehicles cannot get through. Police Department, firemen, ambulances, you know, you just can't get through. And what make it, they, they have an engine in the middle of the train, so they not even consider, considering moving the train. And it, it's just, it's an embarrassment to the city, number one. But it just show someone with no compassion for citizens in this city that you would just block the right-of-way. And they have parked at least two different trains down the track now like it's a rail yard again. And we feel that our legal department need to get involved to stop this for something happens, somebody is hurt. Because when they park the train like that, excuse me, children go under the train. And that's how people get their legs cut off. And we need to do anything we can to save these citizens from having to live with that kind of hardship. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, you guys want to say?
Well, I was just gonna say, when I saw this on the agenda, Drew Martin, City Attorney, when I saw this on the agenda, we went ahead and started looking at it, uh, and we will absolutely take action on this. There are, there were city ordinances that I believe Council President Griselle sponsored as recently as last year. They govern this. There's also state law that, that can be applied to this. And, and we will get with the administration and take appropriate action.
Thank you. I, I just want to say too, I, you know, I've been riding... Thank you. I, I just wanna say too, I, you know, I've been riding these railroads, Canadian National, for a long time. Uh, started off with the blocking of North Side Drive and Ridgeway, uh, at Livingston. The VIDOC issue right there at Walter Dutch Welch. I know we in litigation over that. Uh, but even going back to this area right here with Maple Street and, uh, Prentice, I was late for class going to Jackson State. We talking in the, in the mid nineties. And so it seems like over time, these railroad operators have gotten too big for themselves. I've talked to Senator Smith's office. I've talked to Roger Wicker. I've even gone to the, uh, Department of Railroad Administration about this. Um, and I think at some point, at, at one point, I was, I, I, Mister, Mister Stokes mentioned that we had the authority and threatened to have him arrested. And I got into it with a conductor out there, uh, because my fish was getting cold. I was leaving, um, Dixons. And so we really need to put some teeth to this and really show these companies that while you do have the right of way, you don't have the, an easement rather, but you don't have the right to block our community's streets off.
And, and that's absolutely correct, by the way. Both state law and city ordinance prohibit this. Uh, establish penalties, including potential criminal penalties, uh, for these violations. Uh, so, so yes, we're gonna get moving on it.
Thank you. Mister Parkinson?
Thank you. It seems like something definitely needs to be done. Uh, I'm just wondering, there were several items removed previously because the administration is just sort of getting settled and, and wanted an opportunity to review that there. I'm wondering if this wouldn't be an appropriate measure to do the same thing, to potentially consider it a week from now, give them an opportunity to see, is this something that even the administration wants to pursue? Or, um, I'm, I'm not even sure if y'all have had a chance to think much about this.
I think from administration standpoint, uh, this is one we would urge you to go ahead and vote on. This is authority for your legal department to take action. Uh, lawyers are not gonna go file a lawsuit tomorrow. They gotta do some homework. Give them authority to get us that information. I would suspect, uh, Councilman Parkinson, that there will be a briefing, uh, in next two, three weeks as they get their information together. And we decide or recommend further how to proceed. So for today, I would, uh, encourage you to go ahead and move forward.
Thank you. All right. Any more questions or comments? All right. All in favor? Opposed? Seven, zero. All right. Very good. Thank you. Now we're down to item number thirty-seven. Clerk?
Order upon Jira Anderson as Deputy Counsel Clerk.
So move. Second. It's been moved improperly second. Uh, Mister Hartley, would you like to do some introductions here?
Yes. It is my honor and pleasure to introduce Ms. Jira Anderson. She will be my primary deputy clerk. And, uh, I'll let her introduce herself. And I think her mother's here, uh, uh, Ms., where is she?
Jackie Woods Anderson.
Yeah. Well, she wasn't. Okay. See her. Could you introduce yourself?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon. I hope this day finds you all well and blessed. Um, my name is Jira Gabrielle Anderson. I am twenty-three years old, and I am introducing myself as the new Deputy Counsel Clerk for Councilman Vernon Hartley of Ward Five. Um, I am a recent graduate of the I Love Jackson State University as of May twenty-twenty-five. Um, I have my degree in Business Administration and Entrepreneurship. And moving forward, I will also be getting my MBA at Jackson State as well.
All right. Let's give it up for.
Arsenal College. And, and, and one of the things I just wanted to mention, it is so important that we bring our youth into this game, into this world. And we set a foundation where they can be in a position where they can take over. And, uh, yeah, I know I went all the way back to kindergarten with this one, but this, uh, but she, she, she looks real young, but very, very competent. And we're looking at some refined processes within our administration from Ward Five. We're looking at more research potential, more social media, more engagement with our younger, uh, adults as well. So we're just so pleased and proud to have her come on. And her grandfather was none other than Doctor, um, uh, Anderson, the noted civil rights, um, physician. So we're so grateful to have you. And, uh, if she comes around and said, hey, that guy's working me too hard, don't believe her. They could take a little extra work. All right. Thank you.
If it's okay, I would like to do as we normally do, have one round of questions or whatever the case may be. And we can start with Ward One and work our way on down.
I have no questions. Why?
Very good. Ward Two? Very good. Ward Three?
Oh, I have lots of questions. You know, I, I smile because I think about your grandfather. The Honorable Doug Anderson and your uncle, Doctor James Anderson, and just your whole family. Y'all, pillars of the community. Your grandmother, you know, tell her that I said I love her. How many times been to their home when I was on the board supervisor and Doug was on the board of supervisors and your mother? You know, she's such a special person. So, uh, Councilman, you getting a, you getting a jewel.
Thanks, sir.
Jewel. I'm definitely voting for it. Thank you, Mr. Brother.
All right. From Ward Four, welcome. Ward Six?
Nothing. I don't have.
Ward Seven. All right. Any more questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor? Seven, zero. Very good.
Can we, uh, introduce your family?
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Well, let me say this first. All right. Welcome to the Clerk's of Council office.
Thank you.
If you would, please take a second to introduce the people that you brought with you today.
Your family.
Your family.
Oh, um, Jackie Anderson, that's my mom. Um, I'm also the granddaughter of Douglas L. Anderson, Honorable. Um, also my grandmother is Josephine Anderson.
All right. Thank you. Congratulations.
I appreciate the opportunity.
All right. Moving along, we're now gonna go into discussions. Number thirty-eight, Councilman Stokes.
Thank you. Uh, Mister Mayor, we, uh, we honorary named, uh, Maple Street for Lerone Bennett Junior. And over the years, the signs that were put up, could we please look at getting the Lerone Bennett Junior signs up on Maple Street? We can probably find the order. Uh, also, we honorary named, um, Omar Luther King, Rob J. Could we nearly GM? Could we find the order so we can get the signs up also for Rob J? Thank you so much.
All right. Go ahead and move to thirty-nine, Councilman Stokes.
Uh, thank you. Uh, we, uh, honorary named many years ago, we can talk to Bruce Payne's wife, um, part of Lynch Street, right there where WOKJ used to be, for Bruce Payne. And we trying to get him up where the family members can, can see him and join him and realize that their loved ones meant a lot to this city. Thank you.
All right. Number forty, Mayor Horn?
Thank you, Mr. President. And before I get started, I'll speak to Councilman Stokes. Uh, Lerone Bennett, uh, is one of our literary heroes and historians, uh, who graduated from Linear High School. And I went on to much fame and, and notoriety with, uh, Johnson Publications that publishes Ebony Magazine and Jet Magazine. Uh, Rob J is legendary as a sports, uh, anchor and a sports, uh, newscaster and, and really has a tremendous, uh, following in our community and is very well thought of. And also Mister Bruce Payne, uh, was, uh, the voice of WOKJ. Uh, and that was the source of much information via radio in our community. And WOKJ served a, a lot of, of, of good and public good in our city. And Bruce Payne, uh, had a voice like none other.
That's right.
So we will find those ordinances and, and, uh, uh, put, uh, the signs up as appropriate.
Thank you. Thank you, Mister Mayor.
Thank you, Mister President, and to, uh, the ladies and gentlemen of the City Council. Uh, on last week, uh, we were sworn in and took an oath of office. Because citizens of this city felt that we knew how and could best lead our city. I believe that there's a lot of talent on this City Council. And I look forward to working with each and every one of you to move our city forward. Uh, it's clear that, uh, our work is cut out for us. Uh, and, uh, uh, as a consequence of that, we have to put a good team of people together. And so I'm, I'm gonna be offering up for our confirmation at the appropriate time. Uh, several members of, of my leadership team, uh, who will be helping to run the administration of the city. And, uh, uh, without, before I, I do that, I do want to, to give a couple of shout outs. Uh, to former Representative Mary Coleman, uh, who was a longstanding State House of Representatives member, went on to lead the National Black Caucus of State Legislatures. Uh, to, to current, uh, Senators Sally Norwood, a great friend and a great champion for Jackson. Uh, and also to, uh, members of the Board of Supervisors. I see that, that Supervisor Wanda Evers is still with us, but we had, uh, so, so we still have Tony Smith, uh, also supervisor for District Two here. And President of the Board of Supervisors, Robert Graham, was here a little while ago. And then I also want to, uh, recognize two very good friends of mine and two very good, uh, spiritual counselors of mine, and that's Reverend R.K. Moore.
All right.
And Reverend Danny Hollins. Are they still here? Uh, they may have just stepped out. But, uh, did want to recognize those folks. And if I don't, didn't call your name, blaming on my head and not my heart. Uh, so, uh, we've got a number of interim, uh, appointments that we are making to try to start our leadership team up. This is a, 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 uh, leading this city is a daunting task. Uh, there's a lot of work to be done here. Uh, but I am optimistic and encouraged, uh, by the folks that we've been able to, uh, gather, uh, to lead the, uh, our team in, in its initial days, uh, as well as encouraged and optimistic by, uh, you, the ladies and gentlemen of the City Council. And I, I look forward to, uh, moving Jackson forward, uh, exponentially, uh, over the coming days, weeks, months, and years. And, and so to that end, I'd like to announce that, uh, our selection for Police Chief is Mister Joe Wade.
Right.
Chief Wade, you've done a commendable job, and we want you to, uh, we look forward to your continuing in that capacity. Uh, we also have, uh, I'm not sure he's in the room. I know he had a, a member, uh, who was injured last night in a fire. Uh, but new police, uh, excuse me, Fire Chief, Ray Sean Thomas, uh, is our selection for, uh, the Fire Chief for the city. And, and speaking of fires, he's probably somewhere putting out a fire. My Chief of Staff, Willie Bozeman, uh, is, is, uh, uh, our, our selection for that, that post. Uh, we also have, uh, as our Chief, uh, Administrative Officer, uh, he's already been recognized many times, uh, former Judge Peter Tabelson. And, and he's hardworking to find that money for, for the Jackson Music Awards. For Dallas Melanbecker. Great to have, uh, Mister Melanbecker, uh, continuing with us as our Chief Vistal Officer. And also Mister Drew Martin, who is City Attorney, and he's, he's earning his keep today.
All right.
With the various, uh, comments he's had to make on some of the matters that have come before the, the, um, uh, this, the City Board. Uh, Mister Drew Martin. And also a face that's not unfamiliar in these parts. Human, Human Resources, uh, Director, Miss Tori Martin. Is Tori still here? Yeah, there she is. Yeah. And also you've heard from Von Anderson. He's our interim planning and development director. Uh, Von is no stranger to City Hall as well. Uh, uh, a person who is, uh, no stranger to City Hall and to the City of Jackson and to, uh, the Mississippi Civil Rights Museum, Miss Pam Junior. She was the first director of the Mississippi Civil Rights Museum, went on to lead all the museums, uh, at, at the, um, over on, on, uh, North Street. Pam Junior is joining us, uh, for Human and Cultural Services. And also, um, uh, the, um, head of our IT Department, uh, Information Technology is a person who's well known in, in the City of Jackson and in Mississippi, Mister Nathan Slater.
All right.
She, um, uh, has not been able to, has, has to give some notice and will not be joining us for another week or so. But our Communications and Constituent Services Director is Miss Grace Fisher, who is well known from her Clarion Ledger days and her work with the Department of Corrections. Let's see. I think I've got, oh, uh, I'm sorry. And our City Clerk, Miss Angela Harris, she's earning her keep today as well. Where's Angela? She's, she's, uh, probably back across the hallway. And, uh, I, I wanna give, these don't necessarily have to come up for confirmation, but I did want to give a shout out to two individuals, uh, on my staff, uh, who are, have been, uh, doing yeoman's work, uh, in our campaign, and we expect them to do likewise, uh, in, uh, city government. And that's the manager of Constituent Services, Miss Perlene Campbell. Perlene, you're sitting there. Uh, Mister Malcolm Johnson is, is, uh, joining her in, in that office and will be making some other appointments pretty soon. And last, but certainly not least, he's probably the, the youngest person up in here, but maybe with the exception of, of, uh, Miss Anderson. And that's, uh, Jamal Sidley. Uh, Jamal is my, uh, Special Assistant. And his distinction right now is that, uh, he is the grandson of Doctor A.H. McCoy, whom the Federal Building is named, and Doctor Rose McCoy, whose, um, name stands on the Rose McCoy Auditorium at Jackson State University. Uh, and you can give him a hand too. So, uh, Mister President, those, those are our interim appointments, and, uh, we'll be making more permanent selections very soon.
Mister Hartley?
Yes, uh, Mister Mayor. We certainly appreciate it. You know, we know that we've gone through a long, uh, election process, and I'm, I'm very much excited that we had all the public comment and participants in that process. So going forward, I, I think there's three things that, that I will certainly support this administration on. That is the unity. First of all, we're already looking at our unity, and we need to put that in front of the people. And the second is trust. And you've made a, a lot of comments concerning trust. We need to show folks that we, they can trust us to get the job done, and they can trust us to do it with professionalism and dignity and integrity. And the last thing is action. Folks, uh, when I heard, uh, from the voters is they want action now. They want their streets clean. They want all these things. Uh, I'm in your corner, and, uh, please feel free to, to call on me or anything within my ward or anything that we can do to make your successful and make our city successful. Please, please, don't hesitate to call anything.
Well, thank you, uh, uh, Councilman, and, uh.
Mister Mayor.
Let, let me just say, thank you, Mister President. You know, uh, it wasn't just a slogan. Uh, we believe that Jackson is ready, and we believe that the time is now. And folks are ready for us to see, to get this mess that we have before us cleaned up. And, and I mean it, uh, from top to bottom, from every aspect, there is just so much work that we have to do. And no man, no woman can do it by themselves. Uh, we've all got a role to play in this, and we've all got to pitch in and, and get this job done. Um, and, uh, you know, last week, uh, we did, uh, it made some symbolic, uh, gestures, uh, where, uh, every member of the City Council who was present, uh, raised their hand in unity. And, and I think that that was also a pledge that we're going to work together. We're gonna disagree sometimes, but we're gonna disagree agreeably. And, uh, at the end of the day, we're gonna speak with one voice, and that's the voice for Jackson.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mister Stokes?
Thank you. Um, Mister Mayor, um, some of the appointments I won't be able to support, but the vast majority I will. I'm still concerned, and we'll sit down and have a conversation, that with too top-heavy, too many departments, I would hope that we can make necessary cuts and let's shift a lot more money to police. We got to make this city safe. I'm not saying everybody's job is not important, because everybody's job is important and is needed. But people just do not feel safe in Jackson. It's not because of the chief. It's because we don't have enough police officers, and we got to pay them. We can't just hire police officers and don't pay them, and other cities come and get them after we don't train them. We got to make. We got to make this city safe quickly, because there's some bad boys in this city, and we got to let them know Jackson's not their town. If they bad boys, go somewhere else, because we're gonna handle it, as they say in my neighborhood, we're gonna handle it. But I'd be glad to sit down and talk to you about it, and the cuts I hope that we'll look at making, because we must, we must make this city safe. Where anybody from anywhere, when they come in Jackson, they're not afraid, and you're not afraid to sit on your porch in summer or winter, you're not afraid of anything, because we are not gonna let these armbandists, as Ina Santos would say, destroy our quality of life.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President, for me.
Sure.
Councilman Stokes, your comments are spot-on, and I have sat down with Chief Wade and said, look, whatever limitations or restrictions or whatever handcuffs were placed on you in terms of doing your job, those handcuffs are off. We want you to do your job. And I will also say that it's a little too early for us to figure out where we're top-heavy, and where there are some potential cost savings that can be experienced and realized in various departments. We're gonna be looking very closely at that as we try to put this budget together, but our top priority is public safety.
Amen.
We have to have more troops, more sworn officers on the streets, they have to be better trained, they have to be better equipped, and they have to have the best technology, and not only for the police department, but for our fire department as well. And in November of last year, the city was delivered a letter saying that you're about to go from a level-three fire rating to a level-four, and that's gonna hit everybody in their back pockets, because your insurance is gonna go up, and people may not want a right insurance in the city of Jackson. So job number one is the police department, but job number two is the fire department. We've got to make sure that our firemen are not living in deployable conditions when they're on duty, protecting the citizens of Jackson. We've got to make sure that they are well-funded and well-paid, and that they have the best of resources, equipment, and technology as well. To that end, we just got a $2 million authorization from the Capitol Complex Improvement District back in late March. We have not received that money yet, but it's coming, and it's gonna create a first-class early alert warning system, not only for the CCID-impacted area, but citywide. It's the first deployment of money from CCID that's going citywide in the city of Jackson. So we hear you.
Good job, good night. All right, thank you. Colleagues, we're gonna get back on this agenda here. Now, the city attorney said that there's no executive session, and that's something to celebrate today. None, because he loves executive sessions. All right, if you could signal to me verbally or by a show of hands, number forty-two? I'm sorry, you gotta read it, don't you? You don't have to read it. Did you receive your report? All right, Mr. Stokes?
No.
No? Okay, I did. Hartley? Brown Thomas, did you receive your financial report? All right, Mr. Parkinson? Okay, she says she'll get it to you. All right, closings, anybody?
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Closing on to Mr. Jimmy Lee Ellis Sr., grandfather Monte Ellis, professional basketball player, attorney Charles Earl Griffin Sr., one of the best attorneys in the United States of America, really the world, Mr. George G. Swaggett Jr., Mrs. Toni Francis McDay, Mr. Charlie Black Murray Jr., legendary gospel music pioneer, Ms. Mose Burks, Mama Burks, and eighteenth birthday for Del Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Mr. Hartley?
Yeah, I just wanted to just confirm, this coming Saturday is the roll-off dumpster day. I think, I'm not sure if.
It is, I saw it on Facebook, it is. And also, colleagues, I'd like to close this meeting in memory of Mr. Fred Scott of Terry, Mississippi, who passed away on June 30th, and I ask that you please keep my deputy clerk Valerie and her family in your prayers, and I also like to echo Councilman Stokes in closing this meeting in memory of Mr. George Swaggett. George and I attended high school together, his parents and my parents are great friends, and we marched in a band together, and he just left away, and so that just lets us know that no matter how old you are, how young, because he's younger than me, we need to love on each other every single day. Thank you. Anything else to come before this body? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.